Don't click on, wait a minute, let me go back to what it was that I wanted to tell you not to do. When you join the meeting, click on quick me, uh, meeting, quick view instead of view, meeting details, because if you're in meeting, quick view, I won't move your screen around as I'm doing some things.
And we're live.
Great. Good. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, it's May 19th, 2025. It's 7:03 in the evening. Uh, this is a Weston, Connecticut Board of Education, uh, regular meeting. We have a quorum. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I think this, this may be the, uh, this may be the last student Board of Education representative comments. I think our next meeting is after graduation. Who would like to start?
Um, I can start. Um, so yeah, last one, it's gone by so fast, but we're so glad you guys have had us. Um, anyways, just to, uh, just some updates. Um, seniors just had their last day of school, as you guys were saying before. Um, and we started our internships today. Um, some of us marked our last week of school with AP exams. Um, others, it was just a great day to celebrate the last four days of high school. We did like a senior sign off. We had a senior spirit week and people wore white T-shirts and signed each, signed each other's shirts. It was kind of like a little callback to middle school. I don't know. Um, and then on Friday night, we had our junior and senior prom, which was held at the Amber Room. Um, it was a beautiful venue and everyone had a great time. Um, and that was it for last week.
Yeah. And then for seniors starting today, we all began our, like around three week long internships and it's only been one day, but it's been a great experience so far. And then kind of upcoming for seniors, we still have our senior stroll, graduation, and then a class trip to Six Flags on deck. So we're all really excited for that. And then last night, um, the senior student government held a senior sunset, which was something new, but it had a great turnout and everyone seemed to have a lot of fun. Um, and then sort of switching gears, um, over the last two weeks of school. So like the seniors is kind of last two weeks. Um, juniors and seniors that, um, taking EP classes, took their exams. And we can't necessarily say that we enjoyed taking them, but it's definitely nice to be done with exams and just kind of on internship. Um, and yeah.
Um, and then on that note, final exams are coming up for, uh, junior, sophomores, freshmen. So classes will begin to prepare for those and obviously people will be studying hopefully. Um, and then the PTO is selling, uh, like finals care packages, um, which have like snacks, pencils and just like a nice little thing that, um, to help boost morale during final exam week. And then companies have been working on their spotlight show, which is a series of different songs, skits and acts. Um, and this show will be on Friday, May 23rd at 7:00 PM. Um, and then in sports, we're starting to see the end of the regular season as we lead into the postseason. Track SWBCs happened today and Weston was the host. Um, we had amazing turnout and all of our athletes did very well.
Yeah. And then sort of in other general school news, like starting this Friday, May 23rd, um, the high school is going to be introducing cell phone free Fridays. And we think this is going to be a great way to sort of get students to disconnect from their devices um, in the hallways and just connect with each other instead. Um, and so that's kind of all the updates that we had today, but before we go, we just wanted to say, um, like thank you to the board so much for having us at all your meetings this year. We're taking time out of your schedule, which obviously is very packed to listen to our updates. It's been, um, both such a pleasure and a privilege, um, to be the executive board liaisons for you guys this year. And we just want to say thank you again so much for having us.
Well, the thanks are ours. It's, um, first of all, let me enjoy it. You did a fantastic job. This, uh, this past academic year, and we're really looking forward to seeing you all in about a month. Um, at graduation, but we really appreciate your comments. It gives us, it gives us a, a feel of what's going on at the student level. And, um, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's just been a real privilege to have you here, you know, for the past nine months, and we really wish you well going forward.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. And good luck in both Michigan and Syracuse. They're lucky to have you guys.
Thank you.
Now, who, who actually, who interviews your, the, the, the next folks that will take your seats? Do you put them through some sort of like interview process? Like, how do we know we're going to get as quality candidates?
Um, we don't think anybody is good as us, honestly.
Yeah, well, it's not, we're not gonna.
Let's extend it here. It doesn't get any better than this.
Yeah, they're gonna, they'll, the whole school does a vote and it's the people that run for our positions are people who have been on student government for, um, a couple of years at least. So, yeah, they'll be experienced, obviously like Jay said, not as good as us.
But I mean, they'll be qualified.
Good enough, good enough.
Qualified as us, but like they will be qualified and definitely.
I, I assume that you were voluntold to do this. Okay. So you're, you're, you're elected like us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Elections are coming up too.
Yes, they are. So those will be, yeah. So be good.
Fabulous.
Exciting.
Thank you so much for having us.
No, thank you.
Thank you, girls. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Excuse me, the next item on the agenda, that's really fantastic, by the way. Uh, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 21st, 2025 Weston Board of Education Executive Session. Um, are there any changes?
I have one. Well, yeah, I actually do read them, whatever. Judge, judge me later. Um, I was absent and present. So I think there might be a typo. I know you all missed me. But for the meeting minutes, unless I'm blanking out the 6:30 PM, April 21st, it makes mention of me being absent. And then it makes mention of me being, I think, present, if you look at.
Okay, I'll go back and check what Sharon sent to me, but did you come late by any chance to the meeting? Maybe?
I believe I was on a plane, so I think I was not.
Oh, maybe you were there and then you, you left? Was that it? Was that the meeting that I remembered?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay. You don't have, if you don't want to, then you don't have to approve these minutes and then we can figure this out when you, when you started and when you left the meeting, and then we can do this at the next session.
Or you could abstain.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy upstanding. I just.
Okay.
Or if you don't want to approve the minutes and you want Sharon and I to figure it out, that's fine.
I'll just take it you missed me so much that I was here and.
Always, David, always.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Okay.
Um, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, I move that the Weston Board of Education approve the minutes from the April 21st Executive Session.
I second. I second.
Uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Me.
David. Uh, the next item on the agenda is to approve the April 21st, 2025 uh, Weston Board of Education meeting, our regular meeting.
I move that the Weston Board of Education approve the April 21st, 2025, uh, meeting minutes. Yeah.
Your second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?
Me.
Great. Thank you. Let's move on to public comment. Um, as everyone knows, uh, we read a, uh, comment before uh, we hear from the public. Um, and I'll just let you know that, uh, it's going to be a little bit longer than what we generally, uh, what we generally read. The board welcomes the opportunity to hear from members of the public about matters concerning Weston Public Schools. Public comment is an important chance for the board to receive input and feedback from our school community. We listen attentively to all comments shared. While we value and pay close attention to public comment is our practice, is our practice. You moved the screen, Jody. It is our practice to not respond substantively or sometimes not at all during public comment. There is, there are several reasons for this. First, engaging in a discussion on non-agenda items could violate the board's obligation to comply with the Freedom of Information Act. Second, the board or the administration may not be prepared to discuss certain matters raised in the first instance by public comment. Third, the board develops its meeting agenda carefully to ensure that the board addresses matters that are pressing or relevant at the time of the meeting. We encourage members of the public with specific questions, concerns, or complaints about our schools to reach out directly to Acting Superintendent Lowe. You may also email the board at our email address, boardofeducation@westernps.org. Additional comments on public comment at board meetings can be found on our website. Uh, meeting conduct, but a meeting conduct bylaws of the board 9325, um, which you'll find, uh, on boardbook.org. Um, and just an extension of this, so the boards received the number of messages um, over the last week regarding, uh, the reduction um, in our, uh, in our staff. Uh, Acting Superintendent Lowe has responded uh, to many, if not all of you today. We'll be discussing the rationale, uh, later in the board meeting. And with that being said, uh, I need to read this, this disclaimer. For those of you who may want to speak about reductions in teaching staff, please be aware that the Board of Education Bylaw 9325 and consistent with the First Amendment, no employee should be spoken about by name or reference, either positively or negatively. Please adjust your comments accordingly and be aware that we reserve the right to ask you to stop if they violate this policy. With that, uh, Jody, if you'd like to open up, uh, the line for public comment?
Sure. Um, if you'd like to speak for public comment, what I would like you to do is at the bottom of your screen, please click the raise hand button and that way I will know who is interested in speaking. Um, I am going to announce your name. I am going to allow you to talk. And when I do that, um, I would also appreciate it if you would, um, show your, show your, uh, video camera and you will have five minutes to speak and I will let you know when your five minutes is done. The first person that I see is Judith Meadows. Judith, I'm going to allow you to talk. And please turn on your camera for us.
I just need to figure out how to turn my camera on for you when I'm.
It should be, if you're on a computer, it should be there at the very bottom of your screen. You should see something that says audio and then video.
Uh, I think the way you have it set up, I don't have a video option. Um.
Okay, just hold on just one moment. We were trying a different way to bring somebody in. So instead of doing this, I'm going to go back to the old way, way and promote you to a panelist. Hold on. We'll see if that'll work. Okay, did that work? Do you see the button now?
I do, but my color is terrible there. All right. Maybe my photo was so much better. Okay. So hi. I'm Judy Meadows. Sorry, my camera looks terrible. Um, I live at 226 Weston Road. Um, and I have two children that are in the high school, Ethan and James. Um, I'm actually joining as public comment, um, representing Mothers in Blue, which is a group of eight of us mothers. And I actually wanted to use this time to make sure it was well documented how appreciative we've been in terms of the meaningful conversations we've had with Board of Ed members um, and school administrators. Um, we, I know have spoken at public comment, um, over the past two months. Um, and I really want to tell you from, uh, um, we are impressed with the thoughtfulness, um, of the leaders of our schools. Um, there's been a number of really, um, amazing things that have happened over the past month that I wanted to, um, make sure we're well documented. Um, first, um, the district has recognized, um, Jewish American Heritage Month, which is the month of May. And we look forward to that recognition, but also moving forward in years going forward, um, that having a space to expand. Uh, we also want to recognize, um, the middle school leadership, um, uh, Mr. Joke, um, who is, um, really shepherding, bringing the No Place for Hate program to the Weston Middle School. And I know that there is a training on Thursday afternoon involving, um, faculty, administrators, students and parents. And I believe there's even some WIS, um, attendees, um, that will hopefully allow expansion of this program, not just to the middle school next year, but to WIS in the, in the year after. Um, I've also, um, wanted to make sure that, um, we commend, um, Superintendent Lowe in all of the work she's done, which has been really amazing since she's taken the position and establishing the committees um, of accountability, um, culture and heritage curriculum and social emotional learning. Um, and, um, we, uh, want to let you know how much we are here to support you in any way that we can possibly do, um, in that really important work. And I want to just make sure that I thank each of you, um, and particularly those, um, who work on curriculum, Dr. Henkel, um, and, um, David Felton, who's a board member, um, for your thoughtfulness and approaching, um, and evaluating the curriculum in our schools. Um, it is a testament to the good work that everybody does here. And so wanted to start off public comment with a compliment, um, and a big, big thank you from the community.
Great. Thank you, Judith.
Thank you, Judith. I'm going to move you back to an attendee now.
Thank you.
All right. Hillary Cole, uh, you're the next person that has their hand raised. I'm going to promote you to a panelist now. And when I do, please turn your camera on and state your full name and your street address.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Light. My name is Hillary Cole or Hillary Collidin. I live at 25 White Birch Road. I have two children, one in WIS and one in Hurlbut. I'm going to read a statement. And I want to thank everyone for their service. I understand very deeply and intimately how much time and effort you've putting into these, not just these meetings, but all the deliberations that you've done. Okay, here it goes. I am here to employ the administration and the board to continue the employment of one of our best fifth grade teachers. I can only infer his firing was based on three mistaken beliefs, that our schools are under enrolled, that there should be budget cuts this year, and that we can't create mechanisms to reward excellence. I am not alone in this fight. I posted to Moms of Weston 48 hours ago and right now have over 70 comments from mothers who are just as distraught about this as I am. I don't know if they could all sacrifice the time to be here tonight, but know that my position is in the majority, I believe. I encourage the administration to check the comments for themselves. To address under enrollment, and I'm putting that in air quotes, even if we are under enrolled for fifth grade in the next few years, the firing of our best math teacher is short sighted and still wrong, the wrong decision. Further, this approach could exacerbate under enrollment. It becomes a vicious cycle. Why? Because with decisions like this, you are forcing all Weston parents to choose between leaving the community for a more robust school district or paying for private school and private tutors. Regarding budget, how can we, can we afford to keep these teachers, you ask? There are two ways, actually. One, stop paying for one-to-one Chromebooks for Hurlbut and WIS students. All the data shows that these kids should not be on screens for developmental reasons, for any reason. And most parents don't want their kids on more screens, even if it's in school. That's between 300, $300,000 to $600,000 a year. There's your salary for the math, for all of the teachers that are being, uh, that are not being rehired this year. And by the way, Weston has a median home price of over $800,000. And we're telling, we have to look at the fact that the school district has to pay for a screen per kid because that's blatantly ridiculous. I'm on a crusade to limit my children's screen, screen time, not to give them more devices. The administration is woefully uninformed if it thinks six-year-olds should be learning from screens. That's the first way to pay for this. The second way, raise my taxes. Yeah, I said it. I'm here to tell you that all of the parents who live in this community understand math. And there is a simple math equation that will motivate me and many other parents in this district. It is better for us to pay 1,500 a year, 2,500 a year, even 4,000 per year, more in property taxes, which by the way, will get us our new middle school than to pay 50,000 per kid, per year for private schools or private tutors, which many parents are already doing in the Weston School District. Can you imagine how much better our enrolled schools would be if we didn't have to make that choice? And about rewarding excellence, I understand the union policy stipulates that retention be based on seniority, commonly known as first in, first out. But this constraint means that the administration has to be smarter, more nimble. If the administration had done their due diligence, they would have known that this specific math teacher is one of the best teachers in the district. He is taking kids who hate math, like my own fourth grade daughter, who hates math and is, he's making it fun and interesting. We have him as a private tutor. As a district, these are teachers we need to keep no matter what. As a business decision, you don't fire your best employees ever. They could be redeployed in another grade, could become specialists, et cetera. You have to be bold and nimble and you have to understand your constraints as the administration. You don't fire your best teachers. And let's be real, does under, what does actually under enrollment mean? Does it mean 15 kids to a class, 12 kids? And actually, wouldn't that be wonderful if our kids could learn in classrooms with those ratios? Smaller classes equals better scores, better rankings, better home prices, and that is the way to get enrollment up. The administration needs to make excellence, not austerity, their number one priority. And by firing Weston's best teachers, you aren't doing that. It is a shameful mistake. And I implore you and the administration to rectify it. And I encourage the board to help facilitate that immediately as, as much as they could. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Hillary.
Thank you very much, Hillary. I'm going to move you back to a pant, to an attendee. Just give me one moment. Okay. The next person is Jill Hitman. Jill, I'm going to promote you to a panelist. When I do, please state your full name, your street address, and you will have 15 minutes to speak. I'm sorry, five minutes to speak. It's been a long day. Okay, you're ready whenever you are, Jill.
Thanks. I definitely do not need 15 minutes. Um, also, I am Jill Streisand. This is my work name and, um, I'm at 11 Cavalry Road. Um, I'm speaking today about the choice the administration is making to cut nine teachers' jobs in the coming school year to fit into next year's budget. I don't quite understand how there are budget constraints when the Board of Ed budget is increasing next year. And I also would love to have transparency around where the funds are going as nine teacher salary is not a small amount of money. I have personal experience with two of the teachers on this list, and I think it's important to note that they are two of the best experiences I've had in my six years in the Weston Public School District. My experience with a fifth grade teacher who Hillary was just mentioning, um, who, and is on your list is personal. My daughter Macy has had hands down the best academic, academic year of her Weston Public School career this year. And it is because of the exceptional teaching and support of her teaching team, one of which you are firing. She comes home excited to talk about what she's learned and she's gained not only skills, but confidence. Earlier this year, this teacher sent a note to parents offering one-on-one support before school. He arrives daily by 7:30 AM and opened up that time so students could get extra help in math or science. Macy took advantage of this many times, and it's not because she had to. It's because she wanted to. It's not because she loves math. It's because she loved her experience. She's now being recommended for accelerated math in middle school, which is an achievement I credit in large part to this teacher's dedication. My experience with two of these teachers make a lasting impact, not just on students, but on families. Instead of creatively looking for other ways to make budget cuts, such as not investing in technology for our earliest learners, as Hillary mentioned, we, who, those learners need great teachers, not screens. And you are cutting the things that provide the biggest impact to outcomes in our district. I am one of those parents that Hillary referred to as not wanting my child on screens at schools. And I urge you to reconsider the upcoming budget and find a way to retain this exceptional talent that you are allowing to slip through the cracks. I really hope there's still a path for these teachers at Weston.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you, Hillary. I'm, um, Jill, I'm going to move you back to, uh, attendee right now, and then I will promote somebody else. Just give me one moment. Um, I see somebody here that has a screen name that says iPhone 13. Um, I'm going to promote you to a panelist right now so that you could speak. And then, um, please turn on your camera and state your full name for us.
Hi, am I on? Sorry about that.
Yes, I can see you and I can hear you.
Um, so I, I wanted to.
Boystar, can you state your full name for me and your address? Thank you.
Awesome. Uh, yes, I'm Jasmine Kozakov. I live on 14 Old Field Lane. Um, and I wanted to talk about, I guess I, I wrote something and I just wanted to kind of like share my opinion. Um, and so I really urge you to reconsider any decision that would result in cutting teachers and/or essential programs. And I understand that declining enrollment and budget constraints are real, but these challenges shouldn't come at the expense of our children's education or the educators who shape it every day. And so I wrote three points down and one is like, we don't compromise learning by cutting teachers and staff. Our teachers and school bus, um, school drivers are the heart of our schools. They have direct and lasting impact on the student's development. Cutting staffs solely based on tenure without considering merits or contribution risks losing some of our most dedicated and effective educators, many of whom are newer to the district. And I, and this approach puts policy over people and undermines what study consistently shows, which is high-quality teachers and their reconstructions are among the most important factors in student success. The second is preserving programs that build creativity and global readiness. Programs like art and Chinese are not luxury. They are essential. Our entire district has only one or two teachers of each of these subjects, and yet they are among the first on the chopping block. And so creativity is a core skill. A landmark from NASA study by, um, by Dr. George Land showed that 98% of five-year-olds tested in the genius level for creativity, and that number dropped to just 12% at age 12, 15, and 2% by adulthood. And as Dr. Land concluded, non-creative behavior is learned and cutting creative programs only accelerate that. And then language is also vital, and the decision to sunset the Chinese program is short sighted because I understand that maybe there is some analysis that, that enrollment is low, but we also see or heard that enrollment in Chinese one was increasing. And, um, and you know, there's a shifting global landscape. Fluency in Mandarin will be a powerful asset and our children needs to, the tools for the future and not just, not just a reflection of the past. And then three, making smarter cuts, not just at the expense of the students. And budget cuts are necessary if they come from a non-essential, should they come from non-essential spending, such as $200,000, which we approved last year for a basketball court or $300,000 for the new Chromebooks or the budget that we had for those virtual reality, um, items. And I'm, I'm referring to a lot of the, the items that were from last year's budget. And so from there, we can see that, you know, our, we want our tax dollars to be, to support teachers and classroom learning. And rather than flashy technologies and things that really doesn't make sense, especially when we have two basketball courts. And when we were asked during the budget meeting to approve the one that was kind of in a, a dilapidated state. But the thing is, if we were to save the teachers versus spending the money on a basketball court, we would have, we would have voted differently. And so I just, and so those are my three points, but I also want to state that there are so many families that are new to Weston. And before we are in the school system, we are not heard. We do not know what's going on in, in the town and we don't actually get to know what is important, but there's a lot of us. And we have been here for a few years now. We've, we're, we're more than willing to pay more money to keep our educator. I think that we make a good portion. I think that we make a good portion of, of Weston taxes, if not more. I think we, we also own bigger property and pay more taxes. And so I really want that for our voices to be heard, because while we're not in the system yet, our kids will be the one impacting it. And I think that there's a lot of big push for, for radical ideas like closing an entire school and, and reducing taxes, but those people already benefited from Weston schools. We have not, and we're the ones staying. We're the one paying, and we're actually going to be the ones that will make the changes that Weston needs. And for us to stay and for us to want to continue, we need Weston Board of Education and admin, administration to really think about what are the cuts that are being considered and, and like, and not get rid of the things that's actually really important, our teachers, our bus drivers. Like those things where the kids are with them, it's a safety thing. It's an, it's like their, their education. Like, we, we should not sacrifice those. And I'm, I'm hoping that you can save some of them. I'm hoping that you will consider-
Jasmine, your five minutes are up.
Okay.
Hey, Jasmine, I'm going to move you back to an attendee. Hold on just one moment. And I do not see any additional hands for anybody that wishes to speak. Oh, wait, hold on just one moment. Somebody just raised their hand. Lori, I'm going to promote you to a panelist. You'll give me just a moment. Hey, Lori, you're a panelist now. Thank you for turning your camera on, and if you can just state your full name and your street address, I will give you five minutes. Oh, we can't hear you. You're muted, Lori.
Every day. I'm a proud mom of, of my first grade son, and we live at one twenty-one Davis Hill Road. Like many parents, we chose to move to Weston during the pandemic, in large part because of the Weston Public School System and the commitment of the community to ensuring every child in Weston has access to a high quality of education. I'm not just here on behalf of myself and my husband, Matt Browner-Hamlin, but other parents, including Tammy and Chris Yee, Arshna and Ash Jane, Laura and Brandon Gross, Ally and Brett Zuckerman, Allison and Alex Wood, and Danielle and Sam Hennies. We have all signed petitions today in support of our son's kindergarten teacher. Um, and I know dozens more who have signed petitions for our son's educators. Our son's experience in kindergarten validated our choice to move to Weston. We had our son in landmark schools in Westport, and we were nervous. He got such an incredible education at Landmark, Mark with teachers who had been there for twenty-plus years that we, we were nervous. Our child's kindergarten teacher was beyond exceptional. Her expertise in advanced education and special education meant that she fostered individual relationships with the kids, meeting them where they were and helping them feel safe, secure, and confident. And this is exactly what we want our children to experience during their school, schooling. Additionally, many of us who are joining the call today attended the art jam at Horrible last Thursday. More importantly than the art, which was incredible, was my son's excitement in sharing his art with us. It was a huge success because of Principal Catus, of course, and the incredible art program that is now at risk because of the cuts that are being recommended. This is the, this is the exact sort of, uh, type of environment we want our children to thrive in, where they can move through their education in Weston's public school system, learn from experienced, quality, exciting teachers, have a full experience with learn, having the opportunity to have art and Chinese arts program and gifted programs. Um, we, we are hoping that this is what the community is going to stay invested in. We chose to move here, eyes wide open. We understood the property taxes, and we chose to move here because of the schools, because of the community investment in the schools. And so I do hope today you will take into consideration all of the parents who have made statements today, as well as all of the petitions and all of the letters, because it really, it is making many of us question why we are, we moved here when the schools continue to be, um, at risk of additional austerity cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you very much. Just give me a moment, and I will move you back to an attendee. Sue, I'm going to promote you to a panelist. Give me just one moment. Hey, Sue, you're now a panelist. You have the ability to turn your camera on and to speak. Please state your full name and your street address for me.
I think my video is not showing.
There we go.
Hi, I'm, hi, I'm Sue Rosenstock. I live at eight Pent Road in Weston, and I have two kids in WIS. Um, I'm actually, I agree with everything people have said, um, and, uh, in terms of the, the cutting, but, um, I actually had an unrelated question. Um, I wanted to find out whether we could get improved transparency around AP participation and test scores. Um, I know that AP scores are a key index that colleges and universities look at um, when they're determining how competitive our school is and how high-performing our students are. Um, and I would love to know, I know that seventy-six percent of students take at least one AP class, but I'd like to know on average how many AP classes each of our students takes. I'd love to know um, for the AP classes, what scores our students are getting, because if they're not getting three and above, it really doesn't make sense for them to take these classes. It's a lot of time and a lot of effort. Um, I'd also like to know, um, whether online alternatives, um, are available um, and whether we support them, especially if it's for a class that's offered at Weston. If our students can also take a class that's offered online instead. Um, I just want to make sure students are as competitive as possible when it comes to applying to colleges and universities. Um, so that's it.
Thank you, Sue. We'll take note of that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Sue. Give me a moment to promote you back to an attendee. And Tammy, you're the next person. I'm going to promote you to a panelist. Tammy, I can see you on this side. If you could turn your camera on, unmute yourself, and then just state your full name and your street address, please.
Let's see if this works. One moment, please. Can you see me?
Not yet, no.
Apologies. Give me one moment, please. Let's set things to get through here. If there's someone else, they can go first. I was going to try to get my camera to turn on.
You're on mute, Jody. Tammy, why, why don't you just go ahead and give us your, uh, address, please?
Yes. Can you hear us, Tammy?
While we're waiting, Jody, how many more people would like to speak?
She, I think she, she just came on, on a different device. Give me one second. There was nobody else that had their hand raised at the moment. Tammy, I'm going to try promoting you on the other device.
There she is.
Is this working now?
Yep.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
My name is Tammy Yee, and I, um, my address is thirty-seven Treadwell Lane. I'm in a unique position, as my husband and I have both a first grader as well as a junior in Weston High School. I just wanted to echo the comments of my fellow moms who have spoken out already against the cuts of these amazing teachers whom unfortunately we cannot name. Uh, my husband and I, we moved to Weston, Connecticut a few years ago from one of the top school districts in New York City. Um, I have two high school, well, one, one high school, uh, junior here now in Weston, who actually chose Weston High School over Stuyvesant in New York City. If you all know New York City High Schools, you will notice one of the top high schools in the entire country. My other son, who is now a going into junior year in college, went to Bronx Science. I know what good schools are. My husband and I vetted Weston High School very carefully. We know what it is to be part of wonderful school districts. Um, it is with a heavy heart that we are in this position right now, where both, we have a child as a junior in, um, Weston High School and, um, has participated in the Mandarin program for three years now, which is going to be cut next year, as I understand it. It is also the second or third teacher, I believe, in the fa, in the past three years that his, he has experienced. While we are of Chinese descent, my son does not speak Chinese, did not read or write Chinese until he entered the, the Weston, um, High School, um, Chinese course in which he has, uh, not only excelled very much, enjoyed embracing his culture and the language and learning the new language, and has, um, been part of the Chinese Honor Society. Um, so it is quite, um, quite dis, quite disappointing to us that as he goes into his senior year, um, that this will not be available to him, but also as I speak for, um, many, many other parents whom we've already heard from today, and, uh, this, this, um, this drive to continue this, uh, this language um, has been going on for, you know, a, a number of months. Um, so one of the considerations perhaps is to open up the class and the language to younger students within the Weston, um, Weston School System. My other child, who's a first grader, has now had, um, you know, one, both, there's two teachers, first grade and, and kindergarten teacher who are on that list. Both teachers absolutely amazing. You heard, uh, Ms. Lori Load speak earlier about Landmark Preschool. A few of us have had our children at that school. Top-notch, really, really wonderful, um, school. And, um, similarly, we were really hoping to have the same level of education continue at, um, Harbaugh Elementary School. I have found those teachers, both the kindergarten teacher and first grade teacher, to be absolutely wonderful, know every single child, and really, really understand each child. And so while, you know, the, the, the chances of my child going into second grade and having either those, that kindergarten or first grade teacher, again, are very slim. That's not what this is about. The reason that we are speaking out is because these are the types of teachers that you want in your school district. And, um, when we think about the level and the quality that we want for this community, I urge you to rethink how this school district really looks at who they are cutting at the end of the day. And just like any business, and someone said it earlier, you don't cut your top performers. That's not the way to do business. I'm sure we all want this town to continue to flourish, and we want this community flourish. And we want the community to continue to have a wonderful school system where you have people coming from many other parts of, um, either the tri-state area or beyond to want to come to the Weston School District. So I do urge that this board continue to look at where the investments are being made and where the cuts are being made as well. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you very much, Tammy. I'm going to move you back to an attendee. Last call for any public comment. If you want to speak, please raise your hand. And that is it for public comment. You can move on.
Thanks to everyone who took the time this evening to make, uh, public comment. You know, we, we take these comments seriously. Uh, the next item on the agenda is new business, and it's the consent agenda.
Good evening, everyone. The consent agenda for this month is quite short. Um, we have one resignation of a paraeducator at the middle school, um, as well as one new hire. Um, and I will note for the new hire, um, in particular that it's relevant to some of the comment that we've just heard. Um, this, this teacher, um, her previous position with the district was eliminated. Um, and she is being hired, uh, back into a new role under a new certification area, um, which is really exciting, because we are, um, we are very happy to be able to keep her in district. So, uh, if you have any questions regarding the consent agenda, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have the wording. Move that the Weston Board of Education accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Thanks, Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, the next item is gifts, grants, and bequests. And the first item is a WEF donation of fifteen hundred dollars for a No Place for Hate Committee workshop at the Weston Middle School. Are there questions on this? If not, can I have a vote to accept?
I move that the Weston Board of Education accept the grant from WEF as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The second item on the agenda is a WIS PTO donation for, of twenty thousand dollars uh, for playground equipment. Are there any questions or comments?
It's very generous. That's a comment. Sorry.
Yes, I second that.
Yeah, that is a comment. Thank you very much.
Lucky, lucky students.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve?
Move that the Weston Board of Education approve the WIS PTO donation as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, the next item is, uh, a HES PTO donation of up to twenty-six hundred dollars for installation of window film. Are there any questions, comments? May I have a motion to approve?
Move that the Weston Board of Education accept the HES PTO donation as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, the next, um, is a HES PTO donation of up to twelve thousand dollars for South House Cafeteria Refresh. Questions or comments? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Move that the Weston Board of Education approve the HES PTO donation as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Motion passes. Thank you. It's been a very generous month.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Spectacular. Item six C, uh, Weston Board of Education Policies, Regulations, and Bylaws. It's a first read on the restorative practices response policy. Tino? Any comments?
Yeah, first of all, we should congratulate, um, uh, Tracy, uh, for, uh, earning her doctorate. So congratulations, Tracy.
Thank you.
There we go.
And I think it takes a doctorate to, uh, weed through or, you know, sort of plow through some of policy language. And so there's no one better qualified to lead this discussion.
Okay.
So this, good evening, everybody. Um, the restorative practices response policy is very closely connected to the school climate policy, um, which you'll remember we adopted in a second read last month. In fact, I would say eighty percent of this policy language, all of the definitions are consistent with the definitions in the school climate policy. The purpose of this policy is really to do two things. Um, one is to explain- Um, one is to explain when and how restorative practices can be implemented. Um, and the policy is clear that it's around instances of challenging behavior, bullying and/or harassment in the school environment, or other forms of student conflict that's nonviolent and does not constitute a crime. This policy also, um, despite our very positive relationship with the Weston Police Department and our strong work with SROs, is specific per state statute that any restorative practices in our schools cannot include the direct involvement of an SRO. So this is another required policy related to the new school climate legislation. Um, I can do my best to answer any questions, but that's really a summary of what this includes.
Uh, I have a quick question. Um, so one of the questions I always ask about is when do the parents get involved and how do parents have a say? And this doesn't appear, my, the basis of my question is, this is restorative, but we have a no bullying, um, or zero tolerance on bullying. So how does this policy and the no, and the policy about no bullying, restorative seems to me like reading the policy, there is, um, someone can make a determination as to what the outcome is, but our zero policy documents, there doesn't, it's, it seems to be either on or off.
So let me try to clarify a couple of things related to this. So the school climate policy that we adopted last month replaces the former quote bullying policy that was, um, in place, that was around previous statutory language. Um, I want to be clear, though, that bullying is not a permissible action in, in the school. We take allegations around bullying very seriously, and the process for addressing those concerns is clear even in the new school climate policy. That doesn't mean, though, that restorative practices can't happen in conjunction with, if necessary, discipline, disciplinary action and/or consequences for those behaviors. The purpose of this policy is really to get at the underlying behaviors between staff and students and student to student, so that even if we are providing a consequence for the behavior, we are also helping to repair the damage that exists within that relationship, either through bullying or another disciplinary event.
I, I think, yeah, I mean, I, this policy to me is better aligned with what we're trying to do, which is to educate children. Children are impulsive, especially at certain ages and stuff like that. Whereas the zero tolerance policies, to me, they're a lot more restrictive. So are they, are these policies kind of used in tandem? Or is this policy the first step and the punitive or the consequential or the punishment is secondary? Like, if there's an incident, can, do you go to the restorative options first? Or do you have to go to the consequences punitive first?
I would say we're looking at both, and it depends on what the incident is and what the circumstances are around that particular incident. But, but all poli- remember, all policies are in effect all the time. So if there is a situation that that warrants a disciplinary response and a restorative approach between student and student, both of those things can be happening at the same time.
Good, David?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's the first read. If there are no questions, we move on to, uh, the twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, end of year summary.
I just wanted to, uh, kick this off a little bit. Um, last year I was looking at the, um, end of year recording out, and there were multiple sections, um, celebrating and pointing out progress towards, uh, school improvement goals. And each section was important, but the overall presentation was very long. So what I have tried to do this year is move a few sections a little bit earlier. Uh, so tonight you'll hear part one. There'll be three sections. And in June you'll hear the remaining sections. So this will allow for a slightly shorter presentation, perhaps more discussion, and, um, we'll take it from there. So, uh, Dr. Haefel can, uh, kick it off a little bit. Uh, and then each section, um, uh, has a different presenter. So thanks for, uh, letting us kind of play with the format a little bit. Uh, but I think we can keep a better focus if there are fewer sections at one time. So thank you.
Great. Good evening, everyone. As Superintendent Lowe mentioned, uh, this evening, we are going to be focusing on three sections of our district improvement plan, providing some highlights and updates regarding our goals and action steps within the digital information literacy and technology area, which Dan DeVito will lead. Um, then followed by human resources, that Julianne Gavoni will lead, follow, and ended with, um, safety and security, that Jim Wiltse, Director Wiltse will, um, will, uh, oh, provide an overview. And then we'll open it up for some discussion and questions. And, um, as Superintendent Lowe said, the last two sections of our district improvement plan, which focus on the academic goals and the school climate goals, will be followed, um, in June. So I'm gonna throw it to Dan.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Tina, if you could just go to the next slide. Thank you. Uh, this year we made significant progress in creating a future-ready learning environment by strengthening our district-wide approach to computer science with a comprehensive plan made in partnership with Sacred Heart with the planned submission of July first. A major highlight last year and this year has been the formation of our work of our AI Advisory Committee. This cross-functional team has developed a foundational AI policy for the district, one of the first of its kind, which not only sets clear expectations, but also supports safe, thoughtful integration of AI tools in teaching and learning. In addition to policy, the committee has created a teacher mission statement, guiding principles, and a set of emerging best practices to help educators navigate this rapidly evolving space responsibly. We're also actively, uh, proactively addressing the risks associated with AI use, including its impact on things like student creativity. Our ongoing discussions emphasize the importance of ensuring that while students gain access to powerful digital tools, they also retain and grow their critical thinking, originality, and creative expression. The goal is not just to adopt new technology, but to do so in a way that supports student growth and preserves what makes learning meaningful. Go. Thank you. At the school level, our library media specialists play a key role in embedding digital literacy and citizenship into daily learning. By aligning national standards with our curriculum and integrating technology skills into assessments, we're equipping students with practical tools for navigating an increasingly digital world. Their professional growth around AI is also helping shape future-ready instruction across grade levels. Across the district curriculum, our LMSs support units and lessons focused on digital citizenship, design challenges on our maker spaces, and research and information literacy. While our focus over the past few years has been around articulation and progression, next year we're gonna be continuing that focus, uh, and moving up K-12. And with that, uh, I'd like to introduce Ms. Gavoni for Human Resources.
Thank you, Dan. Um, in the area of human resources, I elected a goal this year focused on the climate that we create and sustain for our staff. As I indicated, um, at the start of the year, when we presented these, uh, goal areas, when our staff are healthy, engaged, and empowered, they are at their best in their service to our students. In particular, I chose two data points from the Panorama Climate Survey as indicators of progress, um, including the perceptions of our staff regarding the positivity of their working environment, uh, as well as their perception of their leader's attention to their satisfaction. The, um, spring data from the second iteration of this year's Panorama Survey is not yet in, so I can't speak tonight to those specific data points. Um, but I will share some updates related to, uh, my defined action steps. And I can always return in June with a quick update when we have that panorama data. Related to, um, policy review, I had an action step, uh, to review certain key policies in personnel and community relations. Um, in the February Policy Committee, Committee Meeting, we had an exploratory conversation related to the revision of our district's civility policy, as well as the adoption of an employee conduct policy. Since that time, um, there have been some more urgent revisions that have been prioritized with the policy committee. So this work has been put on hold, but it is important, and I hope to continue it into next year. In addition, um, my colleague, Dr. Edwards, has taken the lead on the revision process related to the Section 504 and nondiscrimination policies. As you know, um, our district adopted a new evaluation plan this year for educators and leaders. It was a pilot plan that was, um, developed based on the state's new model plan, but it was developed specific to Weston by a subcommittee of our Professional Development and Evaluation Committee. And it's been, um, part of my work this year, along with Dr. Henkel, to provide targeted training and ongoing support in implementing this plan, as well as, um, gathering feedback from teachers and other stakeholders regarding, uh, the plan's efficacy. So we've done, um, quite a bit of work providing training, uh, for our staff around the plan, um, orientation to all members of the certified staff in September. In January and February, there were workshops that were held, um, for our, uh, administrators, as well as teacher leaders, um, regarding the construction of high-quality feedback. And we most recently, uh, just earlier this month, provided additional training to staff members regarding some revisions that we're proposing to the plan going into next year. Our, uh, teacher evaluation working group, uh, found several opportunities over the course of this year to seek feedback, both from, uh, teachers as well as leaders, uh, through surveys and focus groups, opportunities to speak. Um, and they've done a tremendous job of analyzing that feedback, making some really, um, thought, thoughtful revisions to the pilot plan that we've been using this year based on the feedback. And those revisions were presented, as I said, to the staff earlier this month. The bargaining units are, uh, working at this time to vote regarding adoption of the revised Weston Plan. And I expect that that plan will come to the board in June for its final adoption in its, what I'll call, permanent form. Um, in addition to the work around the crafting and training of this new evaluation plan for certified t- uh, teachers and administrators, we've also been working, um, with a new software system. It's called Vector Solutions to house records of our staff evaluations, as well as training requirements. Um, and so we have shifted entirely to this system. We continue to learn and refine how we're using that system. Um, it has been very valuable to us in the transition to our new evaluation plan. And finally, related to evaluation, as we were looking to, um, uh, to work with this new plan for certified staff members, uh, it was also an opportune time to revisit the evaluation for our non-certified staff. So I've met with various supervisors across the district over the course of the year, uh, at various points to discuss their recommendations for revisions to the evaluation documents for our, uh, non-certified staff, to ensure that we're able to provide all of our staff with useful and role-specific performance feedback. Another important, thank you, another, uh, important, um, component of my goal has been around, um, engagement of employees in their, uh, personal wellness education. So over the course of the year, there have been eleven employee wellness engagement opportunities, um, essentially on a monthly basis. And some of those opportunities have included, uh, we hosted a flu shot clinic in conjunction with Weston Pharmacy. Um, we posted several financial wellness sessions, retirement seminars, um, opportunities for staff members to engage in physical exercise. Um, and there has been a great deal of really positive feedback about those opportunities, as well as significant rates of participation in certain activity, in certain activities. Um, there is a final opportunity planned for the month of June. I won't spoil that for you, but I will share that to this point, um, prior to that June opportunity, there have been, to my best estimation, eleven hundred and eighty-six points of contact with these opportunities, which is more than three per employee. Um, so I would say for the first time that we're doing this in a concerted way, um, that's some really significant, uh, level of engagement from our staff. Um, and finally, re- related to recruiting and hiring, um, it's been a good portion of my work this year to add, uh, a system known as Frontline Central to our roster of software systems to help create efficiency and ease of use for our new employees in the onboarding process. Um, this system has really significant functionality for use by all of our employees, but it's been a focus this year to use it exclusively with our new staff in order to sort of get up and running and learn it and think about how we might best employ it moving forward. Um, again, all of this is related to how we help our employees to be highly functional, highly engaged, and feel that we care about them and respect the work that they're doing. Finally, while it wasn't, um, specifically noted in my goal as an action step, I think it's important to, um, to note that over the course of the year, from July first until the present, in my office, we have processed sixty-two new hires, um, including two new principals, which has been a significant undertaking. Um, at present, uh, I'll, I'll note that, um, things in HR move quickly. So when this presentation was, um, posted for this evening's, uh, meeting, we had one vacancy, um, for certified staff. There, there are currently two. Um, so that is, um, a really significant portion of the work that we do in my office, is making sure that we have the people that we need where we need them. Um, and finally, before I, uh, pass things along, I, I would be remiss if I didn't, um, mention, because the goal is about the climate that we create for our staff, there is, um, undoubtedly an impact on our staff when we make staffing reductions. Um, and so as I work to hopefully continue to facilitate and promote a positive climate for the staff in our district, um, you know, I think it is important as we move forward and continue to plan that we look for those opportunities to maintain routine and consistency wherever possible. And with that, I will, uh, turn it over to Jim Wiltse, the, uh, Director of Safety and Security.
Good evening, everyone. Um, just to highlight the I was just hired in February, as many of you are aware, and that's the first bullet point. So some of these bullet points I wasn't here for, but we've got them up to date. Um, so Hire Director, Safety and Security to oversee district-wide safety initiatives and emergency preparedness. The, um, classroom doors at WIS were updated to enhance the internal security and ease of use for our faculty. The district had, uh, new steins installed to restrict and direct, uh, campus access for improved perimeter control along the sidewalk. Um, we're adding additional access points at Weston High School to continue to regulate building entry. Um, eh, over the summer, we're going to be installing a security door to isolate the athletic wing at the high school to increase security for after-hour events. Um, trained and issue, we've been training and issuing the Alertus Emergency Fobs for rapid emergency communication. Commonly referred to as the panic buttons that everyone, um, all staff members will be carrying. Recently, we, I instituted some professional development training for, um, our seven security guards. We went through a de-escalation training that was hosted by Serma and a retired lieutenant, Justin Stanko. And, um, coming up in August, we have NASRO is going to be coming into our district, and they're going to be hosting a school safety officer training that'll certify our, certify our staff in schools, all things school safety. Um, National Association of School Resource Officers is NASRO. They are recognized internationally. Um, I continue to strengthen our partnerships with the, our local law enforcement. I meet with the chief a couple of times a month. Um, and as well as our emergency responders and all of our community stakeholders, uh, specifically the senior center who share the Hurble Building. And it's, we, we, I'm ongoing- And it's we we I'm ongoing doing upgrades to enhance the security equipment and update cameras to our new digital Vigilance System. That's that's pretty much it I have.
Great. Thank you. That concludes those three sections of our district improvement plan. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and throw it back over to Superintendent Lowe and open it up for any discussion or questions.
Yeah, that geez. Not sure what's happening with my computer. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good. All right. So are there are there questions? We should, we could take it one section at a time. Are there questions around the digital learning and technology section led by Dan?
I just had a quick question on the AI Advisory Committee. So it sounds like there's been some work that's been done. I know that we had talked about this oh months ago. I guess when it was in the embryonic stages of sort of just creating the committee and getting a handle on. You know what the policy may or may not look like. Any updates that we're going to get specifically on the policy? Uh, just just a little bit, a little bit more meat to the bones of what the committee is up to, what the policy entails, or how that's all being rolled out. I know you're, I guess you're gathering district feedback, so maybe you'll come back to us with all that information plus the feedback. But would love to understand when some of that starts getting disseminated out to the rest of us.
Yeah, do you, Dan, do you want me to start or you start?
Go for it, Tina.
So, um, thank you, Michael. That's a great follow up question. So Dan and I are leading the AI Advisory Committee. Uh, we currently have fourteen members across the district and our membership includes four administrators, including Dan and I. Seven teachers and four IT support specialists as well. So we are involving not only the educational aspect, but also the infrastructure and equipment members, members as well. It has really been, we've made a lot of meaningful progress since we adopted the generative AI policy back in February, I think it was. And we received some support from CAS and the state. I will say that I think Weston and Dan, I don't know if you will support this or not, but I know that in my conversations with other assistant superintendents, we in Weston are really leading some of this work around AI policies, as well as what those guidelines and parameters look like in classrooms. And Michael, we just finished, the A Advisory Committee as part of our work, just finished developing a educator and student mission statement as well as guiding principles. So that is what we're looking for some feedback on. So we've, we've actually looked at some research across the country. Michigan is actually also doing a lot of this work and probably very well ahead and advanced in this area when it comes to AI education in the classroom. Not only for teachers, but also for students. We've been looking at that research. We've also sent our library media specialist to a variety of training experiences that the state is offering around AI education. And they've been bringing in all that information back and we've culled through it and really looked for patterns and trends and what would fit well in Weston. So what we're getting feedback on from our educators and our administrators is the vision or the mission statement, the guiding principles for educators and then also for students. Some of the overall statements in that, just to give you a flavor. Um, I think the themes around, uh, from the educator stance is around intentionality. Purposeful and thoughtful use of AI to strengthen student and teacher relationships. Enhancing personalization for learning pathways, addressing diverse learning needs of students. And leveraging human expertise alongside AI capabilities, right? So how do we use these tools to enhance the learning experience and not replace the educational experience for students? And so from a student lens, I really love what this committee developed because I think it's really high quality. And I know we're gathering feedback from people, but I really value the work that they've put into this over the course of the year. We've met about six or seven times once a month and really have committed to this work. And I think we've made a lot of great progress in this area. And from the student lens, our mission and parameters or guidelines really focus on how students are using AI as a tool to assist, not replace original thought and creativity. How are we supporting teachers, students to critically evaluate AI tools for accuracy, bias and relevance? And how are we recognizing age appropriate boundaries with AI tools? Because right now our educator and student mission and guidelines are really focused on six twelve AI use in the schools.
And and Tina, there's no doubt in my mind that there could be a white paper for each one of those points. So this is going to be an extremely challenging and I would say fast paced and iterative process. So I can, you know, I can appreciate that. You know, we're probably one of the first to actually be, I think, you know, to be this thoughtful and far along, and I appreciate that as well. I would just say sort of bring us along the process a little bit because this is going to be a constant iteration. And so just, you know, updates, I think every now and then maybe having, you know, someone present a couple of slides or, you know, you know, shoot us, shoot us the policy. Every once in a while, that would be, that'd be really great because I think we're going to get more and more questions on this as time goes on.
What I, one of the things I also wanted to mention that I I love about the AI committee is that I I don't, we're not a bunch of of yes people. So there are people on the committee who are all about AI. And there's, there's actually people on the committee who do not like AI at all. So they, we all, we temper each other, right? Some people, you know, they're, they love it. They can't wait to use it. Other people, you know, that's why I brought up the creativity piece to it. So we're, and with everything constantly evolving, I mean, if you think about it, when we first started this AI committee last year. Chat GPT was a snapshot in time. And now chat GPT can go out and search the web and summarize websites for us. So it's so fast paced, we're constantly like every month, we're legit meeting every month. And it's all right, what, what, what has happened in the last month? And there's a lot to discuss. And because of that, we're, we're trying to be as focused and purposeful with what tools are allowed. So for instance, students do not have access to chat GPT. They do not have access to Google Gemini because we are not at that point yet. So we're trying to make, we're trying to take steps forward, but we're not going to jump into the deep end just yet.
And just one other exciting piece that Dan might not even know about this. I think a lot of the work that we're doing with through the AI Advisory Committee Committee is spreading quickly. And I've had two requests from teachers to join the committee. So now we have additional two new members that really have heard some of the great work. They've seen some of the mission and the parameters that have already come out and they also wanna wanna join in the fun. So we're excited to see that the work is actually growing and expanding and there's more people that want to get involved, which is great.
And during our PD sessions, our choice PD sessions, we've offered a lot of PD sessions on AI and the use of it. And those are the, those are the ones that fill up the most and those, we've gotten incredibly positive feedback on all of our AI professional learning sessions.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Yep.
Are we ready to go on to the human resources question or are there more questions about the technology piece? All right, let's move on to the human resources. Any questions for Julie? Okay. And how about safety and security?
I'll quickly jump in and just say, I think it's great, Jim, the Nazro training for our SSOs. The, if, one thing, many things are true about Weston, but one of the very unique things is as we were interviewing Jim. I got to meet a lot of our existing security folks. They're exceptionally dedicated to the safety of our students in our schools. These are, in some cases, retired law enforcement, retired corrections officers. So I think it's great, Jim, that these are people who clearly still love the law enforcement profession. And I think it's a great tool that they get this additional level of training for them professionally, for them personally. And us as a district, we benefit from that. So I think it's wonderful that we're doing the Nazro training and here in Weston. That's just even extra beneficial for us. So I just think it's, they thank you, Jim, for setting this up and making sure that our school safety officers are well trained.
You're welcome.
I I'll jump in just really quickly and just say that I think we've made tremendous strides this year on the safety and security topic. I think we've increased a lot of communication transparency. I think that started before Jim got here. And inserting Jim just a few months ago, he's made such a positive impact. I mean, look, we, in addition to everything that Jim listed there too. I'll just say that, you know, we, we created the safety and security subcommittee. I serve on that with with David and and Steve. And look, I just want to say from the community, you know, people have reached out to us. They've read, they have questions. We try to address it as best we can during that committee. We've made Jim available to the community itself. Jim has really strengthened ties with the police, with the new captain, Joe Mochelli, with the Police Commission. I think that, look, even even the anonymous reporting system that Debbie administration are working on now, finally getting up to speed. From the cybersecurity side, you know, where and Dan is instituting, you know, the UB keys. We've talked about all the quick links that have been distributed across campus. There's plenty of other things that Jim is actually working on with respect to, you know, enhanced technology and radio systems, et cetera. So I, look, I just want to say, um, thank you to the administration. I think thank you to the board for participating, for forming the subcommittee and participating in it. You know, and thank you to Jim as well for coming in here, you know, really hitting the ground running and being very proactive and open to to the public. So I think that's just a sea change that, you know, we had an experience in in years past. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone and we'll, you know, continue to press forward.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I just want to add my, my thanks to the staff for their leadership and their impressive work this year. So thank you. So we're ready for the next item, Steve.
The financial report, Phil.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, just want to report at this time, some positive news. Um, we have finally turned a corner and we are projecting, as of that reporting period, end April thirtieth, a surplus, surplus of approximately one hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Primarily due to some salary that we have in savings. Those positive savings has helped us to mitigate unanticipated salary needs for for the district. And in addition to that, our health insurance, our census, the health insurance continues to be lower than anticipated. Just to point out, you know, just to tie this into next year, we have also made the adjustment for fiscal twenty six, just to keep, keep us in line with what our current census is. Unemployment, we are seeing that this land will be over budgeted for fiscal twenty six for various reasons. We're also projecting to have a, to be slightly over budgeted for pension contribution for fiscal year twenty five. Other services, we have positive savings in transportation, which has offset some increased needs in tuition and settlement. We've also seen an increase. We had two students who were added mid-year, so where's, where we'll, we will have better than previously anticipated revenue offset for non resident tuition for of approximately thirty three thousand dollars. Included in this projection is a spend of sixty two, approximately sixty two thousand dollars for for continued rollout. Of flexible furniture at the middle school. So we are seeking also just overall approval from the board to move forward with this purchase. On Friday, after our FinCom meeting, we did get us a quick update from the state that they intend and I'm fully funding additional forty million dollar statewide for excess cost reimbursement. They anticipated pay up date for this will be sometime in June. So when we do our final report and when we get back, we'll report what those student numbers will be. If this holds out or holds up, we will be slightly better than previously budgeted by approximately forty thousand or so. And that is where we are for our financial update for April.
Questions for Phil? That's great, Phil. I know we went, you know, it was only a few months ago, we thought we were going to have a deficit. So it's a nice turnaround.
It is. And again, as I shouted out, the sped PPS department, I do want to continue that we have had positive, positive developments. And spent PPS and we're looking forward to that for this year and also for fiscal twenty six. We had students who returned to district. And we also have some placements that we previously anticipated that were no longer needed. So quick shout out to sped PPS for the work that you're doing.
Thanks, Phil. Questions for Phil? If not, can I have a motion to approve the financial report?
I move that the Weston Board of Education approve the April twenty twenty five financial update as presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next is rates in tuition.
Uh, one second.
Okay, Phil.
I lost my agenda. Is that, is that for non resident tuition?
Building facility hourly rates.
Facility and facility rates, previously to what we have done in previous years. I'm sorry, slight change to this, to this particular line item or particular rates. We have changed from link in this from pegging the rate increases from the CPI to be in more in line with our budgetary increase for the annual year. So for fiscal twenty six, we're proposing increase in our current rates by the budget, the budget increase of two point nine six percent.
Questions for Phil? May I have a motion to approve the increase in the building and facility hourly rates?
I move that the Weston Board of Education approve the fiscal year twenty six building facility use hourly rate as presented.
The second?
Aye, second.
Thank you, Sharon. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post. Next is the tuition rate rates for non residents.
Also proposing to increase our non resident tuition rates by the budget, budget, budget increase of two point nine six percent. Also want to point out that for fiscal year twenty six, we do have projected a lower lower non resident enrollment.
Questions for Phil? If not, a motion to approve the tuition rates for fiscal year twenty six for non residents.
Move that the Weston Board of Education approve the fiscal year twenty six tuition rates for non residents as presented.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Post. And lastly, fiscal year twenty six preschool tuition rates.
Um, for, for this year, just a quick reminder that last year, we did do a market adjustment for our pre K tuition. So for this year, we normally take a year, a pause from from making market adjustment for a year or two. So for fiscal twenty six, we are recommending increase in non, I'm sorry, the pre K tuition by a budget of two point nine six percent.
Questions for Phil?
Bill, I ask this question every year. You probably are prepared for it. Jody, I see it's like he does ask this question every year. So I am a fan of market rate because it's a wonderful program. So being that we're increasing at less than three percent. Are our costs to operate it going up by greater than three percent?
I don't believe that our cost to to go up or it's going up more than three percent. You've got, we gotta remember, the purpose of this program is not necessarily to to generate a profit. It's a special education program and we try to have an equal general ed peers in in this group. So I'm going to block this entire thing. So if I mess this up, Tracy, please help me out.
David, I think the question
David, I think the question that comes up quite a bit. So our increases in terms of preschool costs are really around salary and the teachers allocated to the program and the paraeducators. And sometimes there is variability in the number of paraeducator staff who we need in the program because we could, for example, have a student who requires a one-to-one paraeducator beyond the paraeducator who's assigned to the classroom. But in terms of the number of classrooms that we have for the ELC program for next year, we are projecting for two threes classes and two fours classes, which is consistent with this year's arrangement. And consistent, honestly, for the last five years. There was one exception where we had to add an additional preschool class. And based on our numbers, like Phil said, we're looking for a 50-50 ratio of special education to general education peers or fewer than 50% special education students. Based on that, and the numbers that we have at this moment for classes continues to be appropriate. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah. And just to kind of reiterate for parents that might be listening who have kids that are going into the program, I agree 100% to hand-in-hand, the 50-50 split is great for the children who have identified needs. Those children don't pay. So, right, so the children with identified needs, they are tuition-free. So my, my question each year is, it is such a good program. I benefited from it. My son went through the program. It is such a wonderful program. We have a lottery, right? And I think this year, like the years in the past, there's more interest than there are seats. So I just like to say, if you get the, this is a highly sought-after seat and we shouldn't be competing with ourselves.
It, it, thank you for speaking so highly of the ELC program. I completely agree with your assessment. We do have a waitlist. And again, it goes back to the classes are structured, generally speaking, around the identified special education students and what number of students we need overall to provide balance in those classrooms. If we were to be, you know, accepting all students on the waitlist, we'd be talking about a different model than what we have now.
How large is the waitlist?
We have, so there's, I'll be honest, there's movement on the waitlist right now because our deposits were due at the end of April. And so what sometimes happens is, you know, family elects to stay in their current preschool program. So we have been able to send some letters, like within the last week or so, that we have a spot open. But as of this second, we have eight students on the threes waitlist and seven students on the fours waitlist.
Thanks. Other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the fiscal year '26 preschool tuition rates increase?
Move that the Weston Board of Education approve the fiscal year '26 preschool tuition rates as presented.
Second?
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Move on to the district updates. Debbie?
All right, thank you. First, the good news. I wanted to just give a shout out to all the arts and music that go on this season. I've been to several music concerts and I know they're continuing. I think one of our public commenters talked about the art jam. So thank you to all the K-12 art teachers. It's quite fun to sort of walk or run between buildings, trying to see all the exhibits. But if you're looking for creativity, that was a great place to see it. And the art teachers have done a great job of showcasing their student work in age-appropriate ways. Also got a chance to peek at some of the work of the Project Challenge students at the middle school. And, you know, everything from video games to, to mapping parks, to writing jazz music, to taking drone photography. There are lots of others that I, that are skating right now, but it was a tremendous range of talent and interests. So when you think about the 21st century student, there they are in front of you, doing incredible things. Some of them were, were working in the medical field and, and making adaptive devices for the elderly, using technology. So again, it was just amazing for such young students to be thinking in such forward ways. Also want to thank the PTOs. You, you approved, they're generous, incredibly generous gifts this, tonight, and they have, you know, made gifts all throughout the year. And just as important as their fundraising is the energy and the time and the support that they have given all year to our schools. I met with the PTO leaders last week, just briefly, to hear an update on, on all their activities. And you just get exhausted listening to the list of each school and the number of volunteer hours and the number of parents involved and the concern and their dedication to the school system. It's just amazing. You can't have an outstanding school system without such involved parents. And I'm just super impressed for such a small district at the, at the energy level and the number of parents involved in the PTO. I keep calling it a PTA, I apologize. But the PTO is really spectacular. So great thanks to all that they do. Now, just to get a little touch upon some of the public speaker, or the public comments that we heard. First, I want to thank everyone who took the time to speak tonight and also recognize the numerous email letters that we have received, you know, expressing concerns about the teachers that are being reduced because of lower enrollment numbers. And we, like the parents who spoke, are incredibly impressed with the talents of these teachers. And this is no easy time of year and no easy task to have to reduce staff. But I have to take it back to the budget building process. And I think when I say budget, people sometimes think, oh, that means that they want to take money away. And sometimes that has to happen, of course, during the, during the, the process. But the budget process also involves looking at enrollment numbers. And the numbers at the elementary level, K-5 declined, so that the number of sections, the number of classrooms, we need fewer of them looking at next year. It's not a program cut. It was really based on enrollment. So that is sometimes difficult for people to understand. We weren't trying to reduce the number of classes. Enrollment was lower than it is this year, so we need fewer number of sections. And we are not increasing class sizes. You know, we're still well within the range of traditional, existing, board-acknowledged, district-used, for a long time, class size ranges at the elementary level. In terms of how these reductions, as unfortunate as they are, have to be made, is all teachers participate in, in an evaluation procedure and they're all evaluated according to certain performance standards. The process for reducing the number of staff has to involve lots of different factors, including the number of teachers who plan to retire or the number of teachers who are leaving the district for other reasons. We also have teachers who have been out on long-term leaves and are returning. We also have, to consider the number of years that a teacher has worked in Weston. We look at the tenure status of the person and we look at the certification areas. And we look at programs across the district. So no one building acts totally in isolation. So somebody returning and whis may affect somebody at Pearl, but for all those various reasons, including, you know, certification and length of experience. And also, we need to look at the contractual agreements and the legal requirements in reducing force and making reductions in force. Julie has the unenviable job of putting these processes together and making sure that the unfortunate news gets delivered clearly and early and according to all the requirements of the process. So I think, you know, we've done as, as good a job as we can. No one wants to see good teachers leave, but, and we agree that these are some terrific teachers, but they're not leaving because we have cut program. These particular teachers at the elementary level, it was because of enrollment-driven numbers. However, things do change quickly and I don't want to hold out any false hope, but there are two or three situations that we're monitoring closely, that we're not ready to talk about in public yet. But depending on the decisions of, of certain staff members and, and certain program needs, some of these reductions may end up changing. But I don't, again, want to hold out any false hope. I'm just saying that it's not over till it's over and we're looking at it every single day. So that's about all I can sort of say or add to the situation, except that we feel terrible as well for losing good staff. And again, it's unfortunate and we have made, you know, the best decisions we can within the parameters that we have. And we are not reducing the programs. We have based the elementary class sizes on traditional class sizes. We're not increasing them, we're changing those. So, and again, I'm a little late to the entire budget process here. So I've done my best to sort of fill in some of the history. But anyway, I welcome, I'm not sure about welcome, but I understand people who have questions. And so if any board members would like to ask questions, and our expert Julie is here, so I don't make any technical mistakes. So, thank you.
Questions? If not, Tracy?
Hi again, just a quick update for tonight. I'm very pleased to report that in terms of special education teachers, paraeducators, and related service providers for our ESY or Extended School Year Program that begins on July 7th, we have a very significant increase in the percentage of positions that are being covered by Weston Public School staff compared to previous years, meaning that we need to hire on a very limited basis from outside the district. In fact, at this moment, I'm just anticipating two positions for related services that, that need to be hired and filled by non-Weston employees. So that continuity and consistency is great for everyone, especially our students. I will just note, I know Julie mentioned this and it was in the consent agenda. We're thrilled with the new addition to our special education team at the middle school. She is already a familiar face. And we are in the process of working to fill the open special education teacher position at the high school. We are seeing an increase in the number of applications for these kinds of positions, which is also a positive sign. The end of the school year is always a particularly busy time for PPS. We have a number of, a significant number of meetings, I guess I'll say, to plan for the upcoming school year, especially as we are supporting students transitioning between buildings in the district. That's it for me tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Terrific. Shall we move on to committee updates? Cabe? You're on mute, Lisa.
Thanks, I'll just make it short. Cabe has a 2025 legislative wrap-up. What happened and what are the implications for your school district on Tuesday, June 10th? I think it's pretty important. They're going to be discussing education funding, special education, teacher certification, education mandates, and disconnected youth. Unfortunately, I can't attend. It's my 46th wedding anniversary, so I, I, I won't be able to attend, but I think it's really important if anyone else is. In the Cabe Journal for May, there is an interesting article that indicates that there are 20 active superintendent searches in Connecticut. And it's an article that give, that says, "Give your new superintendent a great start." One of the suggestions was a retreat with the board and the superintendent. And that's my summary.
Questions for Lisa? CES?
Nothing noteworthy at CES.
Curriculum?
So I'm actually going to kick it over to Tina because we did a section on writing and I will not do it justice. So Tina, if you would tell everybody about our writings.
Absolutely. So we had our curriculum and instruction leaders come to present the district writing curriculum for the, for the board. And we focused on the mission and the vision of our core writing instructional practices across the district. The team talked about some grade-level curriculum examples that really focused on a continuum of kindergarten all the way to high school so that the members could see that gradual, you know, process of development from kindergarten all the way to high school. And you could see clearly with some of those artifacts, the level and magnitude of writing as it evolved over the course of the 13 years. We talked about different writing samples and talked about grammar and structure and complexity and voice throughout the presentation. We also wanted to allow for some time where we integrated some of the different types of literacy programs and resources that we, that the board has supported the school in adopting over the years that has lent itself to reading and writing development at a very early age and, and how those programs have really helped support the evolution and the development of foundational writing across the district. And it ended with some conversations around the ways in which we integrate more practical forms of writing throughout our curriculum, such as business letters and emails and opinion pieces. And the team talked a lot about how the secondary students have different ways of integrating some of those tasks throughout their curriculum and also through some of their enrichment experiences, which ultimately are part of a portion of the graduate. And, and that was, that was kind of it in a nutshell. It was a very lengthy conversation, very thorough. I have to applaud the CILs for really putting together a really good presentation. And it's sometimes very hard to do with a very, you know, critical component or critical topic and to do in a very short period of time. So they did a great job. So thank you, David.
And I'll just quickly add one of the things that I did ask about, which I think is in the works, is, I'm not sure what it's called in education, but it's basically teaching our students how to write things like a letter to a company, trying to get them to do something, improve a product, a complaint letter, a letter to an editor, a letter to Megan about the cellphone policy. So I'm not sure what exactly, Tina, you call that, but I do, that's an area that I would like to, I think it is being done, but it's not necessarily being like brought forward that this is part of what we teach our kids to write. So what is, what kind of writing was that called, Tina?
Well, we were talking about how some of those opinion or debate types of writing is infused in across the content areas. It's not an isolated, specific course where writing is, you know, used in that way. But the, the team talked about, you know, you mentioned draft legislation in government class. They talked about writing polished emails to younger students, often writing for cause and, cause and effect or for events throughout different tasks or unit of study across social studies per se, or maybe in the science area. So that's where some of the team was talking about how some of that evolves in the course of a, a curriculum over time.
Thanks. EOC, Peter?
Yeah, good evening. You know, we started our night with such uplifting news from our seniors. But unfortunately, I have sobering. We had our EOC meeting on Friday. We had SLAM in Colliers present their preliminary assessment results. I've been struggling for four days for a descriptor for what they presented to us, but I think without too much exaggeration, I would use the word dire. And because of that, And because of that, uh, Deb, uh, recommended, uh, it's imperative that we hold a tri-board meeting on that building and its ability to deliver education. Uh, no later than maybe June eighteenth, after our last board of ed meeting, uh, it requires immediate attention. Uh, if anyone else who attended that meeting want to chime in, maybe I have a different descriptor.
No, well, I'll chime in. Um, yeah, I share Peter's comments. Um, their, their recommendation, um, is some form of a renovation more extensive than, um, we currently have, potentially currently have capital for. Um, so, you know, without going into greater detail tonight, although the meeting was recorded, if you want, if you want to see it, um, we'll, you know, go into greater detail, uh, next month. Um, but, uh, as they, as they said, once you start opening walls and things like that, you never know what you're going to find. So, um, it's a, you know, it's, you know, it's a, it's an, it's an issue, given the amount of capital that has been allocated to, uh, potentially allocated to doing some form of, uh, improvement on the building. Uh, finance and operations, uh, Phil covered finance. Uh, Mike Domaster said, facility-wise, we're, uh, uh, facility-wise, we're in, we're, we're in good shape. Policy committee?
Uh, policy committee, we basically discussed the restorative justice policy that we just had our first read in, um, in, in tonight's meeting. So that was pretty much it. And still waiting on a few more things to come down the pipe for next, next month.
Great. Michael, safety and security?
Yeah, we just, um, we covered a few things. We talked about the enhanced professional development and training for the security staff that Jim had mentioned before, that CERMA training, as well as the NASR training that's going to happen in the summer. Um, we talked about tightening up, building accessibility, uh, by looking to the creation of some additional access control points. So I think, uh, Jim was talking about the creation of some fab accessible entrances. And then Deb, um, took us through the process, the ongoing process of establishing the anonymous reporting system. That was it.
Wes?
Oh, um, that's me again. Uh, Weston Education Foundation. So we, uh, they just went through their, this most recent meeting, they voted for their, um, award recipients for the David Trudo Award and, um, the other one, which is escaping me right now. And they also voted on, um, the grant that we just had, that we discussed tonight, um, for the No Place For Hate. So thank you for submitting that, Dan. And, um, yeah, I think that that's it for right now. Uh, are they, hold on, Tina, were they doing something at the fair?
Hmm. Hmm. The only one I know that they, they just canceled their May seventeenth, um, trivia night.
Um, yeah, Patty, do you remember anything about the fair?
I don't think so.
Maybe it's just something discussed. All right, never mind. It's going to give us some airtime if they were, but never mind. So that's Wes.
So our next scheduled meeting is on June sixteenth. Um, and Deb has, uh, informed me it'll be a longer meeting.
Yeah, the, um, we need to preface it with an executive session. Um, you can see the time there and then have a regular meeting. Um, and then because the SLAM report is so important to discuss and for the, the board to, um, you know, to understand and ask questions, uh, we will need to make another, uh, board of ed meeting during that week. Uh, the June meeting is already quite full. Um, I think in terms of people's focus and the ability to, to devote the time that this SLAM report will need, it needs to have its own meeting. So Jody will be going around trying to find a time. That will probably be as shortly after June sixteenth date as possible and it will be remote.
And, and we're going to invite the board of finance and the selectmen to that meeting.
Okay. All right. You, you, uh, you and I'll talk about how that has to work. All right. Thanks.
Uh, if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
No, you're in.
All those in favor? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.